I call the Dune City Council Regular Session Meeting of May 15th, 2024, 6:00 PM. The session. Roll call, please.
Council President Snow.
Here.
Councilor Giamana.
Here.
Councilor Stinson.
Here.
Councilor Clemens.
Here.
And Councilor Olson.
Here.
So Tom Allen is absent and unless you guys are here for me.
Okay. Very good. May all stands or pledge allegiance, please? We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, do we have any motions to amend the agenda?
I have a motion to amend the agenda, and I don't know how, we need to restate it, but under section, uh, New Business, 9D, I don't believe it should say moratorium, it needs to say something other than moratorium.
Temporary halt is what we used.
Okay.
In the, I bet they will get corrected as the ordinance.
With the corrections, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda passes. Is there any motion for the consent agenda? So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Lila, do you want to?
Yes, so in your.
Do you have any announcements?
Yes, so in your packet, there is a flyer about the Regional Solutions Advisory Committee release that they're looking for people, um, and there's different boards throughout the state. You can apply online, and, um, they're looking, they're expectate, they're expecting 10 to 15 hours per month. There would be some travel involved to different parts of the states. But if you would like more information, I have that. Also, we have the, um, ODART, um, June 15 well run, which is a flight into Salt Pus Lake. And, um, it's going to be landing here at the Land County Park Scram, the Westlake Park, at 2:00 PM. And it's going to be, uh, basically the whole day of, uh, five Florence area flights, and the pilot is, um, Dave Wellman. So that's going to be interesting, they would like, whoever would like to be there for that, to get their support. Uh, and then, just basically that, I think that was all.
I have on here, we're looking for new members through budget committees.
Yes, yes.
So, um, if you'd like to be a part of the Budget Committee, we ask all to, um, please fill out an application here at the office. We'd love to have, uh, citizens on that. So we look forward to your participate, participation in that. Okay, do we have any citizen input for things that are not on the agenda?
Well, I thought this was way further along than I, I guess I'll.
No, if it's on the agenda, this is for things not on the agenda.
Yeah, well, this is, this is not specifically on the agenda. In some ways, it has some relationships, but it's not on the agenda. What I would like to say, I just want to take a few minutes, a few moments, not minutes, just moments, to, uh, to reflect on the strength and the integrity and the skills of the council. Few municipalities of our size can say the same. Having said that, I don't think we always use, uh, the members of our volunteers and councilmen, uh, as well as we could to their best effect. I think this is especially true of the Budget Committee, which to a great degree, as you know, is primarily made up of council members, some of whom are business owners, which requires a lot of good grasp of sound business practices, and the Budget Committee has, uh, probably the strongest background in, uh, Councilman Giamana. His specialty is finance. And in critical issues, such as the one that we, one of the ones we'll be talking about tonight, budget issue, he's voted, uh, twice not to support it. I don't know how he's going to vote tonight, but I think you should take his opinions seriously. He's an expert. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have anything for, that's not on the agenda? Jean?
Yes, um, since according to my, so on your agenda, we are not allowed to speak of a multitude of subjects being addressed in the Dune City public hearing, a sad continuance of retiring city administrators, the city administrators restrictive rules here. I would once again like to know why. Why does Dune City time and again deny its citizens the right to speak freely on matters that so affect us all? Why are our letters no longer being read, allowed at your public meetings? Some of you and many of our citizens have fought, served, fought, and even died so that we might have these constitutional rights. In fact, one of your city attorneys, Ross Williamson, on the August 16th, 2023 council meeting, stated that it is a statutory requirement that citizens be afforded the right to speak at Dune City public hearings, budget meetings, and meetings that include, uh, the raising of fees. Like it or not, we cannot carry, like it or not, he even said, "We can carry protest signs and raise our voices in dissent if we find it necessary." Still, I have been harshly spoken to, even called a liar when speaking the truth at some of our budget meetings. Last week, I was lectured by not one, but two of the Budget Committee members following the May 7th meeting. I am an adult woman, and I did not deserve to be scolded like a child for simply exercising my right to speak on an important matter at another one of our city's meetings, especially when it was my intention to prevent, excuse me, when it was my intention, uh, to prevent those involved from possibly making a costly legal estate for themselves or the city. Tonight's DC agenda states that I can say no more of this matter or other things of timely relevance, but at Florence and elsewhere, I am told I would at most meetings have the right to speak on whatever agenda item I chose. That sounds great. They also provide many services to our citizens that didn't, that, to their citizens that Dune City never has. Thank you for hearing me. Sincerely, Jeanne Jackson.
Anyone else has anything to say on things not on the agenda?
Is there going to be a time later where things can be said about the agenda?
Council, what topic, there are public meetings tonight, so.
If this is the time to speak, I'll speak now.
If it's on the time, on the agenda, you'll have to wait till later. We do have two other, um, public hearings tonight.
So when, when does that happen, though?
It's on the agenda, we'll follow the agenda and go through it. We can't tell you what time, depends on how we get through the items.
Okay, it's generalized, but some parts of it do have to do with the budget, which I understand is part of tonight's agenda.
Okay, so, all right. Mayor's report. Mayor's out of town, he's having a great time. That's my report for the mayor. Lila, community center.
Um, I don't really have anything to report on the community center at this time.
Um, for, um, the water quality reports, I'm still working with the state. We've been emailing this week, and, uh, so it's still in process. Road reports?
Um, I did have a complaint, um, come in about a road here in Dune City and potholes. I know that we are working on the road assignments and stuff, I just want to make sure that, I just want to let you know that.
Okay, we do. And in your handout that was on the table is your permit report. Okay, New Business. Resolution Series 2024, number four, regarding the city's election and qualifications to receive state gas taxes, cigarette taxes, and liquor taxes pursuant to ORS 221 dot 760. Any discussion from council members?
I, I have an open for conversation on that in regards to maintenance and lighting and, you know, different things from this tax. How often are we checking in on those complaints as you receive? I know you have, but multiple other complaints have been received to see if our tax dollars are being taken care of like this. The past ones, I should say. Because I know I have, on my roads, I have made on behalf of my citizens there, and issues aren't being taken care of.
And then mine will take, be taken care of.
So will we go follow up on that?
Please.
So.
I would probably need a reminder of those issues, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Be happy to send you any more, just that we have it in writing. Other than that, I'm, you know.
Okay, well, this resolution isn't about spending tech, it's, it's, it's to receive them.
I, I'm on board, but I would like to put into play that the follow-throughs there to make sure that we're using it appropriately.
No, understood. I just want to make sure everyone knows what this is, I understand what you're saying. Concur, we've got several things that we're going to probably follow up on.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to accept this? And do we have to do this vote by council member, or just?
Honestly, don't know.
I would also say that it would, shouldn't it need to say Lila down here?
And I did change it, and Joe, you were right, I was thinking we were talking about another document, so I apologize on that. But I did end up changing that signature one, I do.
I was going to ask that too, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, this will be passed. This is just to tell the state of Oregon that, um, to send us our tax money. Resolution five regarding authorizing city administrator Jamie Mills to sign the audit documents.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you just said? I, I didn't catch that, about how we're going to send you your tax.
Number five regarding authorizing city administrator Jamie Mills to sign the audit documents.
Thank you very much.
And she is still currently the administrator, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
And she was the budget person for the year the audit was done, so she has to sign them.
That's correct. So unless, does anybody have any discussion?
So, yes. So we've, we're given two different audit reports with different numbers on it, so which one are we authorizing or to sign?
Good question. I don't know which one is the last one.
Um, well, the one that she sent us.
No, that's not the audit report. That's just numbers. The audit report is different.
It changed between the January one that we were given to the last one.
Right.
Actually. Actually, Joe, I asked them for the most recent one.
But still a draw.
It is, because, and it's not finalized.
Yeah, as soon as we finalize.
Yeah, but I, I didn't like that one, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know if that's the.
Yeah, they're not version controlled, so it just makes it hard.
Right.
I can totally.
It makes it really hard.
The numbers are the easy ones.
I have the one from April, except the one you're reviewing.
So there not any version control at all?
Yeah, I look at the page now.
Who would consider we're different, it's not, I don't know which one. You said this one is the one they said is good to go, when you signed it, maybe?
Yes, they told me that was the most recent one, I just, um, that was mailed to me just the other day, I believe on Monday.
Yeah, so there's sizable differences. So this is kind of hard without, Jamie said, but she's the one that's going to be signing, and then, you know, which one's true and accurate, even there's concerns about the accuracy, because big numbers, I mean, one's a hundred thousand dollar difference, I know we're not supposed to focus on numbers, but several, and then we have, borrowed from one account is one number on one, it's half on the other, and I think that's the water fund that we've been discussing, 28 to 14, but I would not be in favor of that, to have, how do we vote for it to sign? We don't know if she's signing.
I, I would agree with that, and I believe that, uh, even if we have to take an audit finding from, from the state, we're, we're going to get an audit finding, we need to have the, uh, the reconciliation of the transfer onto the new set of books, everything needs to be matched and before we move forward, I believe. There's no sense in continuing to just push this horse down the road. Even if we have to take the time, and we don't get it in in time, we need to do it right.
We talked about having an emergency meeting before.
We, uh, I think we might be talking about two different things. The audit's already written, this is what the auditors found, and it's not fixing the budget, we're, we're going to fix the budget. This is talking about, she has to sign what the auditors wrote up.
But there's, there's quite a differentiation.
Yeah, the problem with that.
I, I understand that. And we're going to have to find out from her which one is the right one, but I think we have to assume it's the last one the auditor sent. That they just sent to Lila this week.
Right.
May I still stick to, I would, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it tonight, because no one screened all the adjusting journal entries either, so we got two different numbers. There's a lot of whys and hows, why the changes come, and it's rare for an audit company to give you an audit report and then switch it, I've never seen that come, and I do these every year, unfortunately, for my company, so.
I've never seen, of all the years we've done it, I've never seen one do, do it like that, this company has.
Right, so are we up against, what are we up against?
What's our deadline?
So I know June 30th is the submission.
No, no, that, that's for the budget, that's different than the audit report. That's different, we're just talking about signing the audit report from last year, not the budget submission.
Um, it, it needs to be, it's due ASAP.
I, I thought we were already late on it.
Yeah, yeah. Can I say one more thing, I just don't know. And honestly, it's already been signed.
The audit report's already been signed by, according to this one, we're asking to vote for permission on tonight? Can we see that document?
It's in there, it's in your packet. I believe I put it in there.
Can you just show me a glimpse of what the page looks like? I, I apologize, I only have about 500 pieces.
Oh, I have right.
Probably the runner tonight.
She did, she signed it late second.
Okay, I know that one's up.
So it might be different from the one that they just sent.
That's what I mean, it's too many different things flying around in circles.
It's already gets submitted by her.
That would be my question, it's not submitted, but we signed it without permission of allowing the city administrator to sign it? Am I correct in saying that? I have a problem with that. I really have a strong opinion on that, that I will remain to myself, but, um, be happy to talk about it with.
Absolutely.
Your council president.
Okay.
So we're guaranteed that it has not been sent, correct, it's not been filed?
I can't guarantee that, because that, that signature went to the auditor, to the auditors.
That's been filed, then?
Then it's been filed.
Linda, how about municipal audits? Put it out there, Daniel.
And that is, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to call it out, open for discussion, that's the face of our city.
It's a, this will.
But that's speaking for every single person sitting up here, that's an effort to justice to our citizens.
Yep.
The vote is kind of rolling, we need to make sure. Right.
No.
Well, I think, should we put on record that we're, we need to vote, I think, and put on record?
We either need to postpone it, or we need a vote in saying that we disapprove of it.
Right.
I disapprove.
Well, it's, it's up for action, so it's a vote.
Right.
Right?
Right, so we have to either approve or disapprove.
Once we're done with our discussion, then we need to go through the proper procedures.
Correct.
But I need a motion, we should have had a motion before we had the discussion. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to discuss the matter, which we've done.
Well, that's not what the motion's for, but it's either to approve or disapprove, and then we discuss.
I make a motion to disapprove.
Excellent, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? We discussed it.
We have discussed it.
So, the motion is to disapprove this, so if, to disapprove it, your answer would be a, a, uh, affirmative vote, vote, and.
A yea.
A yea, I mean, and a nay would be to approve it, so. All in favor?
All right.
An aye is to.
You asked to disapprove it, so an aye is the answer.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion is to disapprove this, um, number five regarding signing the audit documents. And are there any nay votes? Seeing none, uh, it is moved to disapprove this. Okay, consideration of the 24, 25 budget, as approved by the Budget Committee. Uh, the public meeting was on May 7th, any discussion?
I guess we kind of started into it with the last portion where, um, I don't understand, I don't, I don't believe that we can pass this or move forward when we don't have the prior budget matching with the current incoming budget, so. Like I said, if we're going to take, if we're going to take hits from the state, we're going to take hits from the state, but we can't keep pushing it down the road.
No, the budget, we could turn in and amend it. Without turning in a budget, then we don't get our tax dollars.
Next, June 30th, right?
Yes.
That's the cut off. And the budget is just an estimate of what we think we'll take in, what we think we will.
You know, people think, look at it and say, well, you're planning to spend all this, no, we're not. We're just planning to take in if we get money, there's ways, we think we're going to spend it. But you just have to have a number large enough on the line item to cover the amount that you get. It's not the exact amount that you're going to get. But if your line item is not enough, then they can only give you up to that line item. So that is how the state works when they're giving us taxes.
Just wanted to be clear, so everybody understands, everybody listening, that the numbers, market study numbers don't matter. I don't want to say the numbers don't matter, but they are estimates.
But they're estimates at this point of, that's why there's a whole bunch of zero, zero, zeros after them and not specific numbers, they're plugged numbers just for us to get money in, and they're, no, I agree. I don't believe they're right. But that's why I would like to amend the budget, and we need to do that, but I think we need more time than one month for Joe and Lila to vote for numbers, and, um, come up with some good numbers for us. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I would say it's a 15, so it's 45 days before we have to do this, or submit it? And submitting it, hit and send, or is like, is there a formal upload?
I don't know what the procedure is.
Well, it would have to go before, I mean, it has to go through two more public hearings, right?
So I think that's where we're running into the deadline, because, yeah, because you have to, we have to post it, we have to make, you know,
do notices.
Right. I'll make a motion that we approve it with the expectation that we're going to modify it.
So there's motion to approve, but modify, is there a second?
Can we discuss motions, like, I don't, what's my, modify, what's that mean?
Modify, and, and, we're going to amend it later on.
Okay, and then, can you explain, so I want to make sure I'm fully understanding this? So we say that the numbers don't matter, because it's the buckets, but in their general guidelines, ideas.
Well, I don't want to say they don't matter, because they do matter, but they're, they're buckets.
Right, um, so is it, we do an amendment every time a bucket's out of whack, then we amend it? Like, what's the process, because I'm not tracking clearly, and this is atypical, how it's done in private industry, so. Like, if we go in, we're saying, oh, we can just amend all, whatever it's at, all these budget numbers, like, what is that process and how? Because it seems like anytime we're off, let's just amend it, to be more accurate, it's just counterintuitive, how my brain's wired. I think it's more refining it as we gather more information, as we do more research, as we adjust ordinances that are beaten into it.
I think it's more refining it as we gather more information, as we do more research, as we adjust ordinances that are beaten into this, then we will have more information, we can refine the budget.
Right.
It's refining it, but it's also even amended at any time, for any reason.
Right. Okay.
That's what I know, is that different than what you know?
No, it's not different than what I know.
So I just want everyone to have all the information of what's going on here, so we can figure out what to do, that's, I very much want everyone to have as much information as possible. We're just looking for a second on the motion, so we can vote a discussion, or. It's not a vote yet.
Right.
There's no second, the motion dies.
So procedurally, what's this all mean, like, so, just a motion to.
If nobody seconds his motion, that motion dies, we still have to have.
Rediscuss.
No, you still need a motion first before you discuss.
Right.
So.
What's the notification, is it thirty days each, or the sequential, like, thirty days, and the second one's thirty days after that first thirty days, or?
Me, as far as notices? I just know that it has to be published into the newspaper, which they're about a week and a half out.
Yeah. And so that's the first one, and then, when do we publish the second one, after the first hearing? It's a thirty day notice, right?
Well, it depends on the, the meeting times, too, hopefully, I don't know, Rapunzel, do you know anymore, 'cause I, I don't know all the notice laws.
Oh, I don't for budget, no.
I looked it up, but I won't look it up for this.
Okay, so who's making the motion, like, consider it?
No, well, consider it for hearing, right?
Yeah, so then we'll go on to the hearing, and then eventually to vote, but this is just.
And so.
Add it to the session.
So then it's gonna go through both hearings, we take citizen input, and then we come back and sit here again and go, now that we heard everyone through two hearings, are we gonna approve it or not? So then we're at the end of the day, if we say no, we're out of time, out of everything, I'm just thinking, I don't have the process.
Right, so what is our penalty if we don't turn it in on the thirty?
I, I don't know, I don't know, I can look into that.
Yeah, I was researching it today on the finance department for the state, and I forgot to bring it, I can't remember, I wanna quote a number that's inaccurate, it's part of audit stuff, but not that we can do it now, there's a lot of outs that have to get to this point, and so in the future, you gotta understand the outs, and extensions can be requested very easily and accepted, so. Okay.
But I don't know if we're too late.
We are too late, that's what I mean, we're too late, so. Okay. Then if it's, I'm gonna restate this so I'm clear, so all we're doing is now we're gonna make a motion, or can make a motion, to say, let's get this to a public hearing, is kind of really condensing your words.
Well, we're having a public hearing tonight anyway.
Yeah.
So.
The first one.
Because it's already been published.
Yeah, okay.
So this is just, if you guys wanna just go on, and we're, we're still gonna have a public hearing on it?
Yep.
And. Any other discussion on it? 'Cause I'm gonna want to get their opinions.
I guess if we, if we're going through and going toward that, do we get to have the opportunity to be able to figure out if those are gonna match, or get those corrected, and then get that to the public meeting in time? Is that possible?
See, this is where I go with, how can we have a public hearing where we don't know, it's not about the audits, about the budget, but.
Right.
It's just, it's a proposal, what we expect, so it'll always be a blind of some, some of them.
Right.
There will always be, in my, what I've seen, there's always something wrong with the budget.
Oh, yeah, no, they're, and for what that you write, and they're, they're done.
Well, I guess the budget has nothing to do with the audit, which is what we're, I guess we're confusing, or maybe I'm there with confusing the two.
Fully accurate in the sense, audit numbers go into your budget number.
Yes.
So you got starting balances, and that's what the audit calls out, we've always messed up our starting balances, so that's why they're always readjusting, and so, yes, they're separate, what I've been hearing, but they are connected in the sense, this draft, or this audit goes straight into the budget.
The one was just signing up the audit, that's what we're talking about, but yes, audit numbers go into the budget, and that's what we're unclear on since they had, gave us so many renditions of the audit, we have to figure out which one's the true and accurate one to put in.
And that's what I'm asking, is in between now and then, if we can have the opportunity to be able to figure that out, and be able to move forward? Is that possible?
Yes, except for we do have the one that they, they did give us, and so I don't know, the problem is, is that I don't know if that needs to be adjusted.
Well, you don't, you would never adjust their audit, so they're gonna say.
But as far as your journal entries.
Well, it's, we're, 'cause I believe somewhere it says they were done after the first one, so yeah, that's the concern, if they were using the first ones AJEs, then the second one, those will be different, so you have to do a reversal of the, of the journal entries, and then add the new ones, but I don't know, I mean, I just don't know, that's why I mean, there's too much fuzziness, and lack of clarity in this, but if it's, the intent of this vote is just to get it to a public hearing, and everyone can hear it, as long as everyone's understanding that these numbers will move constantly, I mean, I'd support what Chris said, if it's just about getting it to a, a public hearing or a vote from that way.
Well, we're going to go to a public hearing tonight, my question to, to Lila is, can, when we have a public hearing tonight, can we then come back and have the second one with a different budget number? If we refine it in between time, or do we have to stick with the same one?
And you're talking those budget, well, yeah, probably not, because you have to have public notice, those would be different numbers, yes, those would be different numbers.
Yeah, I know they would.
So any change in the budget resets the timeline?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was thinking it would. So, any more discussion, and we'll, this was just for discussion, there's no vote on this, we'll just go on and, anybody have any further discussion currently? Okay, so we will go on to the consideration of ordinance number two sixty-nine. Ordinance two sixty-nine, an ordinance placing a temporary halt on the issuance of short-term rental permits for a period of sixty days, directing staff on how to process short-term rental permit applications during and following the lifting or expiration of the temporary halt and declaring, uh, and declaring an emergency. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider the adoption of ordinance number two sixty-nine. Dune City Charter, section thirty-four, two, provides an ordinance may be enacted at a single meeting of the city council by unanimous vote of all council members present. Section thirty-four, three, provides that both readings may be by title only, and no council member present at the meeting requests to have the ordinance ready full, or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each council member, and all requirements for posting and advertising have been met, councillors have received a copy of the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
City administrator, have all the posting and advertising requirements been met? I will now entertain a motion now of the first reading of the ordinance number two sixty-nine by title only.
I make the motion to waive my title only of two sixty-nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
The motion's carried, a read it by title only. An ordinance placing a temporary halt on the issuance of short-term rental permits for a period of sixty days, directing staff on how to process short-term rental permit applications during and following the lifting or expiration of the temporary halt and declaring an emergency. Do any of the council members have any actual or potential conflicts of interest?
Nope.
I will proceed directly to the public comment period on ordinance number two sixty-nine, as it is not necessary that a second reading be approved and read. I will now open the meeting for a public comment at six forty. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of ordinance number two sixty-nine?
Two fifty-nine or two sixty-nine?
Two sixty-nine.
Thank you. Well, I just wanna say, since none of us are privy to a copy exactly, but you all are, then how can we intelligently discuss it? I have been to your meetings, this is just, this is just a summation of everything you've been talking about at recent meetings, but, you know, we're, we're asked to participate in an intelligent discussion about something we're really, you know, kind of in the dark about what it is you're doing.
It's basically an ordinance giving sixty days, we're just halting the issuance of short-term rental permits for sixty days while we finish writing the ordinance.
Okay.
That's what we're doing, that's what it's for, so, anyone speaking in support of that? Seeing none, is there anyone speaking in opposition to that? Seeing none, I will now close the meeting at six forty-two. I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading of the ordinance number two sixty-nine by title only.
I make a motion to read it by title only, ordinance two sixty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
An ordinance placing a temporary halt on the issuance of short-term rental permits for a period of sixty days, directing staff on how to process short-term rental permit applications during and following the lifting or expiration of the temporary halt and declaring an emergency. It is now time for council deliberations on ordinance number two sixty-nine, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Of course, um, why sixty days? Because we need to get the short-term rental language done, we have to have hearings on that also, correct? So in public notice and hearings, I don't think we're gonna get that done in sixty days, could we use language like, it automatically adopts upon approval of the main ordinance? Because, is anyone here think it's gonna get done in sixty days? We got a lot to do, we got language, we got financial stuff to do.
Well.
Then hearings, right?
I was reading this, and Lila didn't tell if I'm wrong, it's not sixty days from today, it's sixty days from July first.
Okay, so these thirty-one that we got.
So it's giving an extra sixty days, yes, that's, that's the way I read it.
Okay, that's the case, I'm comfortable with.
The paragraph down here, yeah.
Okay.
To, the city council believes that owners are permitted short-term rentals scheduled to expire on July first, should grant an extension of their permit period during this temporary halt, but not to exceed sixty days.
Okay, to September one, really?
Correct.
Good, okay.
So it gives us all summer. Okay, any other discussion? Comments, questions? Okay, I will now entertain a final motion for the adoption of ordinance number two sixty-nine as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve two sixty-nine as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, and two sixty-nine is adopted. Okay, there's a proposal in your package to increase the crime coverage for our insurance. But if you look in there, it covers a lot of things we don't have also, so, um, any discussion on what you see, or issues that you might want Lila to look into?
I do believe that we had had a previous discussion as to not be insuring the vehicle, as people may or may not know it, as the police vehicle, or the patrol vehicle. I'm sorry it hasn't been used, and I can't for, see us using it in the future, um, I can't feel that it would be appropriate to provide insurance on a vehicle that is sitting there not doing anything when the insurance is probably gonna cost more than perhaps what the blue book on the vehicle is.
I briefly recalled that I thought we'd get voted on canceling that, like, last year.
That's what I thought, too, so.
So.
Yeah.
So could we go in more detail with this crime policy's amount, like, 'cause we had fifty for years? Did we ever have issues with it at that level for years?
It covers embezzlement.
Yeah, I think the fifty thousand was the embezzlement.
Okay.
And he was just making a recommendation, he said that that was low for most businesses.
Which is over here in the, the paperwork, uh, crime coverage fifty thousand, so there was just a notation within here that he thought that that fifty thousand.
Right.
So.
So we could increase it to any number, um, if we wanted to increase it at all, but looking through it, other things were found, like electronic, electronic data restoration is two hundred and fifty thousand, and asking our expert, Councilor Clemmons, he thinks a hundred thousand would cover it. So that might be, uh, too high.
Should we go page by page on this, 'cause I have a question in regards to auto physical damage cover proposal, what vehicles are we putting on here? If we are going to remove, as we have requested to remove, the police vehicle coverage, so that would change, not only underneath the property and liability proposed summary, um, but also on that auto physical damage cover proposal, I mean, I just, that number I would assume, I mean, we still use the lift truck to do our trees and whatnot.
It's not functionable right now.
It is not functionable.
Nobody took care of it this last two winters, the water's gotten in the motor and in the pump, and it's not working again.
We really need to look at that, because if we have the, the reliable vehicles, why do we have an auto policy on there?
Thank you for letting us know. Anything else on that page? Okay, second page, um, I guess, second page, it's gonna have public entity liability coverage on it, which also includes auto liability.
As long as we're making sure that the auto liabilities are removed.
And so we have no intention to ever get the, the whole grease on, um, now this blown engine truck, the lift truck? So I wouldn't say delete it if our, you know, eliminate it if we're gonna get that stuff running.
But if you get it running, we can add it back to the policy.
Yeah, we can, so.
Okay.
I think, so this doesn't want us paying for it when we're not. I think she just doesn't want us paying for it when we're not using it.
And what no anticipated are we gonna fix, if we're gonna fix, when we're gonna fix.
Right. I guess the question, I would question would be is what is it gonna cost us to get it going and how often does it actually get used versus what it's costing us?
I'm no mechanic, but what are in an engine, a brand new engine, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, we already put money into the Capri, or we certainly did, and it still is still sitting there in the exact same position. That's, okay.
Our compliance manager can use it. And get one.
Well, are we sure that that one turns on?
What's the impact of not having any vehicles on it? You know, they don't do anything?
The lift truck was to trim, hide branches and things.
Could we do that ourselves?
No, we hired someone to do it. We used the lift truck.
So, it would be a contract out, they'd have their own vehicles. We can put that into the contract when it came time.
It seems like something that would divide.
The tree person's gonna be licensed to do trees and listen to that.
And have the equipment.
Right.
And I, I guess a question I would have is, it, does the individual that the city got to do that, was he trained and, and had the license to run a lift truck? I don't know.
I don't think anything was ever proposed to the city council for approval of such a contract that I can recall. So.
Next, that's a good point. Seems to have more liability.
Right.
Nobody here is, I use it, and serves on YouTube.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, next page, the one that has a list of specific items on it, let's page those.
So, what's the title on the top of the page?
Property coverage proposal.
I, I'll let everybody else go first. I have quite a few. Sorry.
Go down the page.
Property in transit. What property are we referring to for a million dollars? Hired rented borrowed equipment at a hundred and fifty thousand. The only thing that I know that we have rented is the coffee machine. So, what would the other property be there that they're insuring?
Not unless they were thinking about doing certain jobs, I mean, cause it says rented.
Right, does rented mean rental? Big difference. To me, a rental or, or some of the things we've had, equipment was rented and operated. So, then the operators, does this cover them? I have rentals, I miss. What's that?
Or just the loss of, of the equipment, I mean, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Which could be the person inside of it. I mean, so that's the, I don't know. That's something I gotta think about.
I think you had already mentioned the electronic data restoration reproduction. I also have questions on the crime coverage at fifty thousand. Cameras that I, from what I understand, are not ours. We don't have any police dogs, so I don't see why we need that. Miscellaneous coverage, what is that? Next one would be personal property at unscheduled locations. I'd like some clarification on that. And the unscheduled fine arts, I know that we have data here in our community center, but what is the fine art definition as what was proposed by another councilor? So, those are my questions for that page.
Anybody else have any further questions on that page?
The temporary emergency shelter restoration. So, assuming we had an emergency shelter somewhere.
Would be here.
Would be here. But this is also assuming we covered all of the other things. So, we're gonna need additional coverage for emergency shelter. It's one and same.
Across, I mean, it's not a shelter, but I maybe have storage.
We have storage across.
Yeah, I would call that an emergency shelter.
That would just be a storage or outbuilding coverage.
Next page.
I'll let somebody else go first.
Well, I was wondering about CFC refrigerants. The only CFC refrigerants I know are in the refrigerator. Why do we have two million dollars on that refrigerator?
Um, this is included in property damage. The hazardous substance was two million. So, back up on the property damage per current or one hundred million, whichever is less.
Yeah. I just.
But I do see what you're saying was though. It was something we had to have though.
If it's just the refrigerator, I don't see that that, why is that covered in the refrigerator?
We have data restoration again.
Oh, yeah, they're putting a lot on it.
And two million dollars in perishable goods.
What's my, I didn't know we had two thousand or two, two million worth of perishable goods. So, I, I'd ask for some clarification as what is the considering, or considered perishable. We don't have an emergency food supply, so that's my biggest concern on that page.
And this facility is really early, per se, property, right?
And then
Cause there's always.
Step across the line, so that's, there's a lot of stuff on here.
Someone got two million happy, cause on this sheet, demolition, two million. Well, it's already gonna be destroyed, so I don't know. I mean, yeah, it's, and one thing you may wanna ask are these, what's the word called, combined automatically with other policies? They usually have a standard, like foundational policy with the limits. And then, I just, cause I do in terms of our company, you know. It's, then you can go in and do some major buckets, but some of this automat, is automatic in the policy. So, we just gotta ask them that and make sure they're not literally going line by line and assigning their number.
Right, that, that's why we're asking questions. So that we find out what exactly they're doing here.
Yeah.
So, would you be saying that most of these things are probably covered in property damage already?
They could be, right, with that umbrella policies and all that. We're just gonna ask.
I mean, so there's a thousand dollar deductible for all coverages. Is that per thing?
Per incident.
Per. Right, so I mean, like, the building gets destroyed, right? Is that a thousand dollars for perishable goods? Is that another thousand dollars, so diseased line out of my hair, it's a thousand dollar deductible?
Right, yeah, that's a good question.
Or, or is it per event?
Right.
Because I don't think our perishable goods would go over a thousand dollars and meet that deductible.
Right.
We just scratched that line out.
You want newly acquired locations for a million, like, some, for some reason, I'm thinking some of this is just like a built it packaged in, just knowing they have these, but we gotta ask, I guess.
If it's boilerplate, but you can't ask it to be removed anyway, so.
Yeah. But if it's a, no, they'll say, at least what I get from ours is, well, that's in there anyway, so you don't wanna remove it, cause you're paying for it, no matter if you take it in or out. I guess that's the question we gotta ask, are there costs associated with our decisions? So, if they say, no, we're not gonna reduce it if you take it out, then just leave it there, I guess, why not have more coverage? I think that's the thing I'm trying to go through, what's the cost is assigned to each of these limits?
This coverage takes effect July first, so we have time to go back and get clarification on this.
Right.
It's not like it's gonna last in the meantime.
No. And if you go to the next page, the cybersecurity coverage proposal, it says tier one coverage.
Chris, you're the expert in this.
Does it know what that means?
We, we go really, and this for again for a company has a lot of internet presence, we go really high on it, so like, it's everything is getting hacked, everything's getting.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have, they include like breach coaching. We are not gonna be in negotiations with ransomware. They can have our data, that's fine. We're not paying extortion fees for that. That's why, we're not gonna need coaching. Public relation consulting after a breach.
Carry you in front of the camera.
Good. You don't have a seesaw?
How much is our PR company?
Yeah, credit monitoring, I don't know if that's even applicable.
On that one though, isn't there precedence if the breach, the company that's breached, it has to offer something? So, we get them all the time, right, when all the things got breached a couple of months ago.
And all these things are included in the tier one, cause this one is just goes by tiers?
Yeah.
So, if, if all, if all that's included, I don't think we'd use any of it.
Right.
Sure, we can have tier one for eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But we definitely don't need any higher level packaging. I don't think we even need tier one, but.
This is pull wide aggregate of five million per coverage year.
I'm lost on that comment. I don't really know what that is. No, I know what it is. I have no clue what pull wide aggregate limit is.
It's no over five million.
Okay. Do you think we would ever have a cyber?
No, I mean, the, the worst case scenario would be a, a data breach where we lost information. Most of our information is public anyway. There could really be an impact for, we should be transparent, right?
Correct.
We can get into what information we have that maybe would be private, but.
Employee information.
Yeah, that would be it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, with my question to you, Chris, is with that coverage and then it has all the data restoration in the previous two pages, do we need all three coverages?
I think.
Well, I think those, those are different. So, the cybersecurity coverage, I think, is talking from a, from a breach or from an extraneous flak versus just like our machines cut off fire because we didn't maintain them and now we need to replace them. That's just a property damage kinda thing.
Right, I got that. I'm just wondering about this other electronic data restoration.
No, we don't need two data restoration coverages.
Because it seems like we're, we've got a lot of coverage in here for electronic data.
Yeah, so the, the property coverage includes electronic restoration, which we already decided not to under K, and then the equipment breakdown.
That's another.
Additional two fifty that we don't need.
All right, and then we have fifty thousand dollars in coverage on the tier one.
Yeah, but again, I think this covers a different threat, but.
Is this cyber threat? Got it.
Thing.
It's, it does have data in that too, so I'm just wondering.
I, I, from an insurance perspective, I would, if we only had property coverage and somebody gained access to our systems and incurred another claim, they would say, no, that's a cyber threat, your property insurance doesn't cover that, we're out. So, we have to have a base level cybersecurity coverage if we would ever invoke that or not.
Okay. Just trying to see what we can
Yeah.
do. Asking questions?
So, these eight, eight hundred dollars for the year? For this, this base level cybersecurity coverage? That seems like a reasonable cost.
I like how they put it, that it's a contribution. Okay. Any more further discussion on this? Or anybody have a motion for action?
I think we need corrections on it before we can vote on it.
I would like a motion to, to that, that's what I would like.
I would, I would make a motion that when we get corrections on this, we can vote on it.
What's happening?
Okay.
Vote for all?
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Lila, the action is yours to give us some more information. Thank you. All right, next is a proposal for the janitorial services. My understanding is right, this is a proposal to have janitorial services here, and we don't have janitorial services at the moment, is that correct?
That is correct.
Wasn't this one the, the one time like three hours the first time, four hours then?
Four hour, it says four hours the first time, three hours each visit after the last paragraph?
Well, it says four hours after the first cleaning.
It says after, then she goes, then probably three hours each visit.
Well, it says, I, I, I would like a little, I don't know, if, even if it's possible. I believe to provide you with quality cleaning, it would take approximately four hours after the first cleaning. The first cleaning could potentially take longer than four hours due to excessive dust and possible toilet stains. So,
Yeah, she says two different days.
It's not gonna be four or four. She could be in here for eight hours. We don't know that.
No.
And was this the only bid, or was this someone that walked in and gave a proposal to start being our cleaning?
Um, it was basically the person, it's, she walked in.
But we can, we just said cap, that we, we will pay for up to next number of hours per session. There's a schedule set here.
Or, or get more bids, I say.
I was gonna say, this is kinda high for the cleaners that I know. Anyway, but my other question was, it says that she provides all the cleaning supplies. I would like to know that the supplies aren't gonna be anything that anyone would be allergic to. Cause we have to look out for allergies and.
How do you word that? There's so many allergens out there that, like, you're saying, don't use?
I'm not saying don't use anything, but we have office staff and I don't want to affect any office staff that could have allergic reaction from these.
Right, but I'm saying, how do you know? We, we can't run.
We, we have to ask the office staff, find out what supplies she's working, using, and find out from the office staff if they're allergic to any of that.
I could always be dealt with that, in fact. Like, we ask her, actually stop using something, if she says no, then we don't need, no longer need your services, thank you.
Well, I, I just wouldn't wanna start doing it and have somebody have allergic reaction, cause those aren't nice.
Right. And I don't see, is this, um, this proposal, so we'd go to agreement and put a start date and end date on this?
We don't even have to agree to this. This is, we've never had this before. At least, to my knowledge, we haven't had janitorial services, or it's not for a long time. So, we can get more bids, we can take this bid, you can there's a lot of options. It's just a, an option that's in here.
It just seems like a solicitation for services when we haven't opted for it, so I think we need to do more study as to what are we currently doing now? Nobody.
Yeah.
No.
So, that's unfair for you guys.
Right.
No.
I'd say get more bids though.
Counter, counter, say, get more bids.
What's that?
Say, counter this and get more bids.
Yeah. Let's see, cause we just eliminated, you don't have to go out the bigs, it's below a hundred and fifty thousand bucks, right? And this is where I go on the budget. What do we have in the budget for this? And I know, I know we have stuff in the budget for this.
We do.
And so, this is a hundred and, this is once, is this once a month?
Uh, it was twice a month.
Twice a month, so three hundred and twenty dollars roughly. If you do four hours at a time, times two. I think that's acceptable. I mean, so if we're worried about allergens, but not cleaning, it's a whole lot worse, but I mean, you have more back stuff, so I think three hundred and twenty dollars for cleaning.
Well, some, depending on chemicals, I'm sorry to say, some people are very allergic to the chemical smells. And so, you have to watch out for that. So, we, we do have to be careful of, of things like that, but if, if she does this as a business, she should. if she does this as a business, she should know that, she has to be careful of things like that.
Right. Yeah, I don't see three hundred and twenty dollars being a really big deal.
I'm assuming custodial is our cleaning, correct?
Correct.
We have six hundred in past budgets, five hundred in the current budget.
And is that, that's broken over multiple.
Yes.
Budget areas, we wrap several, a few thousand dollars. So this would be.
Yeah, that's just under those.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, we did drop in that, maybe we're bored.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's.
Three hours.
I think going out paralysis by analysis, this is a pretty good one, they've been doing it themselves, which isn't fair. And we got, what do we got? We have budget numbers in there. But we get, in this, if this is non-binding, meaning try it out, get the initial done, try it out for a few months and they'll let them go if it's not working out and they're not happy, um, but it would be good to get something started, I think, right away, at a pretty low number.
We did at least seven cap, though.
No, no.
I was gonna say.
No more than.
Cap hours.
Four hours, no more than three hours. We can say the beginning one, the deep clean has been done four hours and no more than three hours, but we still expect all these things, like a state of work within it.
So they'll have any motions?
Because this is proposal. So I guess a motion to accept the proposal with modifications of setting time limits.
To the current budget allocation.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Now, you can go hammer them down.
All in favor?
Dr. Fallow.
I will just, I'll have to make sure that it's up to ramifications of the cleaning.
Any nays? Not hearing any nays, the passes, we will accept the proposal for janitorial services. We will start the different one. Do you know when they would be able to start?
Um, it was a matter of just giving her a call. She was available, I went right away.
Okay, so no more than four hours for the first cleaning and is it three hours for the?
I think that'd be fair, being that she listed out what they're gonna do.
And if she can do it in less hours, go for it. Thank you very much. Okay, Dune City Road classification. Can you give us some input on this, Lila?
Yes, so this was an email that I received, um, and it is due by five thirty-one, it's from ODOT. And, uh, basically it is just trying to update, uh, reclassify some of our roads here in Dune City. And, um, this map on this first page, looks like there's only, from what I took from it, there's basically two roads that, um, are really classified, um, and then asking whether or not we want to do any updates to that, or if we want to add more, or make, you know, any change, or just leave it.
And they're not proposing any draft changes?
They're not proposing any draft changes, it's totally up to us.
So, go.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just confused as, in the coloring, we have green and then we have red, correct? Those are the two roads that they're saying, which would belong to Oregon Department of Transportation for maintenance.
I don't think that's, I think it was basically just that the, the green road is a major collector, because they're trying to get classifications on these roads, and then the red road was a minor collector. And so they're trying to figure out if, um, we need to add any more roads or those roads need to be changed to other classifications.
So could we define what's, because I am not knowledgeable, what is defined as a collector?
Something that collects the majority of the traffic.
Okay.
So like some of those local roads maybe could be justified as minor collectors, depending on how many other streets they, they pull from.
Just like the red one during salmon season, it's a major collector, not a minor collector all the time on the season.
Those, that's this road right here, right?
Yes.
Those have to be supported by, uh, traffic data, if you're gonna change it. So you, you have to have the, uh, the amount of traffic that's traveled across that road in a specific day, and it has to meet the standards for, uh, ma- ma- meeting either a major, minor collector, arterial.
Can you have the data to make that?
Uh, at this point, I would say no, because I don't know that we've ever done any, uh, road data collection.
It says here, any federal functional classification criteria and definitions, how the road is intended to function within the larger transportation network, how a road is classified in the local transportation network, and traffic volumes and local travel conditions.
Traffic volume.
County or the state won, I saw it had, the things out on Clear Lake Road, I know, I don't know if they did any others, but they were collecting information.
They've done it almost every two or three years since I've been here that I can recall on, on Clear Lake, but that's the only one that I've ever seen them on.
I've seen counties out here in the Pacific.
Yeah, well, it's, it's on the list.
Yep.
Yeah.
So is there any advantages or disadvantages to doing this? What, any advantages or disadvantages to?
Like additional road prepared quantity or anything?
Yeah, is there anything?
No, because Lake County takes care of the roads anyway, you might have to take care of it.
Academic exercise, yeah.
This is the county just trying to make sure that they're up to date on, on their standards for tax collection, I'm, I'm assuming.
Make a motion?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, we accept the classifications of Lake County. Okay. Pre-application hazard mitigation grants program and a post-fire grant. We have a notice of some funding opportunities in here. Do you have any further information on that?
Yes, so, um, from what I understand, um, the, um, the hazard mitigation, Dune City already has some, um, projects in mind and they've already been approved, and so that's what this funding would be for, and that's what I've included in here, um, in the pre-application. So it's one of those projects that we've already identified and has been approved.
So this is, you're just asking for approval to go forward with the application?
What was the grant amount?
Oh, it was a two.
Three?
Well, it's a proposed cost.
I was gonna say, I saw how much the grant you had in it, but I think it's how much we asked for.
Yeah, that's what we asked for.
What are we asking for?
No, is this one of those matching, non-matching?
Twenty-five percent matching.
Yes, yes. It's a seventy-five percent federal and a twenty-five percent local match.
So how much are we asking for?
I think it was seven hundred and fifty, oh, I wrote it down here.
So it's almost two hundred and twenty thousand, you know, matched, right?
Excuse me, might we, the citizens, ask what this project is? I know you've been talking about a number of them, have you identified it on us?
I don't know, there, there were projects, uh, from before, can we let her get the number that we asked for, please?
The estimated cost was, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand is estimated cost, so we have to come up with, is that for, there was seventy-five, so we'd have to come up with two hundred and fifty?
Oh, so it's a million, think of a seven hundred and twenty.
So seven seventy-five would be a partial.
Exactly. Our estimated cost, the estimated cost of the whole project is seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we're asking for seventy-five percent of that, and we have to pay twenty-five?
Of the seven fifty.
Correct.
So a hundred and eighty-seven would be a match, yeah. Yeah.
Can we let the citizens know what the proposal is? It's right here on page two.
These are categories.
I have a, and then proposals, proposal title, what we just read it, or?
I'll get it, I'm gonna find it, because I don't see it yet.
Nope, it doesn't look like this page. There you go, right there, that's the page. Nope, one more.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it. So this is the pre-application, okay.
And when we're waiting, there's qualifiers. Lila, do we meet all the qualifiers? So we have these plans in place and all female, blah, blah, blah.
We do. Oh, so this, this proposal, is this for the seismic step? Okay, so this is for storm hardening and seismic retrofit for City Hall, reinforce the roof windows, building veneer to withstand high winds, and general hazards. Now, is there a separate one for the post-fire grant?
Mm-hmm.
And what's that one on?
I did not need that one.
So the only grant we're looking at now is for the hazard mitigation grant.
Mm-hmm.
For seven hundred and fifty thousand to seismic fitness building.
I thought this was a combined for both of them, it's in the title. It says hazard mitigation grant program dash post-fire.
I, I read it as two different grants, but. It might be the same grant. Looks like it's the, just one grant, so it's just the one for seven hundred and fifty thousand. So. We'll need a motion for Lila to turn in the application for this. Knowing that we have to come up with a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And that is coming from where? Just before we take a vote of motion to descend, who, somebody please remind me what I did, a hundred and eighty-seven, five hundred is coming from? I don't think, I was, our, once again.
No, so that's a really good question. Secondly, is, do we even, it's all seismic stuff of this building, right? Are we truly gonna go through that renovation cost and disruption? And like, I don't see how long we have to use it.
It was until twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, right.
I was gonna say, it's a four-year period, isn't it?
Is it something we're truly gonna do?
Is it something that's actually needed?
Right.
That was coming, my question is, there were some things previously that the insurance said that we had to do to reduce our insurance costs, was that one of them or not?
That I do not, do not know. I just know that that is, that is one of the projects, you've got quite a few projects listed in here that have already been approved by FEMA, um, that Dune City has said that they wanted to do, it's part of the Dune City Plan.
If we put forth this application, that means that we have to move forward with the project, correct?
You know, if we don't have it, when they, if they approve the grant and offer us the money, if we don't have that to fund, we can turn down the grant.
And this is due in two days?
Yes.
Does it even work their timing? Because I hear in here all the time, they're overwhelmed, overworked, we got a lot to do, a lot to clean up. Does it even work doing anything with this? I mean.
Well, if we're gonna do that, we don't need janitorial services.
Well, they're still here, though, so.
I'm just saying, from the time period.
Yeah. So I always get, do we need it? I mean, free money is great, this is so free, it said five percent free, but are we really gonna do anything with it and why tie up the hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars if?
And I don't know what the seismic would entail, if it means tearing down which walls and.
Right.
Everything to redo, it would be a, a large invasion.
The, the end goal would be to make this place survivable in an emergency?
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be shelter for our citizens.
Which could not house all of our citizens at one time.
No.
So it's marked as not a community disaster resilience, um, elements. Would be the expectations that citizens take shelter here in an emergency? If that's the expectation, then we do owe some deliberation to making it useful in an emergency. If we're gonna say, no, if in the event of emergency, everybody just get out and let the building go and operate from somewhere else, then it's not worth the investment. But if we are expecting this to be our emergency shelter, then?
But I guess that's a good, I guess the good thing, we have time then, because we can get it rolling in two days and then have that discussion and like, what would the plan really be?
Yeah.
Do we have a count of our Westlake citizens? What is their count? Because that's what it's proposing, it's in case of a tsunami, the Westlake area of Dune City will be inundated with floodwater. City Hall would be the shelter to citizens if needed.
I thought that was in there.
It is, but it doesn't say what our, I guess you could say.
They said that a couple ti- ti- a couple times. They say that it's gonna be this building, they also say that the reason for Rebecca's Trail is to help, uh, Westlake, and as far as I know, I live in Westlake, and neither one of those are my plan for an emergency.
It's still in the water, so, no tsunami.
Yeah, but this doesn't include tsunami.
Westlakeers agree.
For any reason, I would not.
I mean, like, the, the things that's gonna mitigate, tsunami is not checked, is it not?
Correct, I saw that. But I mean, and it's over here, that's why my question is, is like, how many people are we really looking at? I mean, is this the most viable option for our citizens?
Seismic means, uh, earthquake and things of that nature, and if, I mean, if that's the case, I mean, are we probably just gonna apply for a grant or something to rebuild this, rather than try to make this sustain? I mean, I, I don't know.
I can just tell you, the Westlake citizens that I have talked to, and I haven't talked to all of them, but a few of them I have, and this is not their option, so.
Their, this is not their option, it's coming here?
No. They have other plans.
But again, for tonight, we can say, make a motion to say, pursue it and then have this very detailed discussion, right, at another time. We may not even get selected, I'm just, it's easy in that way.
But I really think, I see Westlake in a lot of, uh, reasons for, for doing things, and I do not know of any time they've surveyed the citizens of Westlake.
I'm not throwing much, I'd say we make a motion just to approve Lila to move forward and drop the application, and then we have further discussions, and we'll just give this, we're gonna have time to have those discussions with people or have a open forum sometime, whatever, town hall, maybe. And we'll just give us, we're gonna have time to have those discussions with people, or have a open forum sometime, whatever, town hall, maybe we can ask. Cause we have time, so this just allows, we can get this done in two days. And then we can see what comes of it. But I'd hate to kill it now if we don't know, or maybe there is a future discussion, we start talking to people, that maybe there is great value.
I'm just saying, I would like the council to talk to the citizens of Westlake, because I don't think that's, you know...
I think we should hold the town hall for that exact reason.
Yeah, and it doesn't hurt to put in for it, I mean...
No, we can always turn it down.
Do I need to restate the motion again, or do we?
No, you just need a second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
All, all in favor? So, please put in the application for this, and we will have the town hall with Westlake citizens and, um... Decide if we need it, should we ever, should we get selected. Okay. The next item is, I need on the record that Lila has permission to be put on the bank accounts and to open a new credit card for us. So I need a motion for that.
The, I think we should list that out, the bank accounts, cause we found there's multiple, so each bank's got on one.
Yes, for all of the counts.
Yeah. As long as we...
And the credit card can go with it, to be at any bank, it does not have to be the bank it's at now.
Correct.
I just want a new credit card to start clean slate.
Yep.
And the other one would, the other ones would be canceled, correct?
The other one will be canceled as soon as Lila gets a new one.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Lila will be added to our city bank accounts.
I'll second.
And a new credit card.
And a new credit card.
I'll second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed with Lila? Make sure this gets in the minutes. Okay. Now, what everybody's been waiting for, public hearing. Okay, we will be conducting a public hearing on Dune City Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five this evening. A notice of this hearing was published in the Spaceline News on May first, twenty twenty-four, consistent with state budget law. I will now open the public hearing for Dune City Budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five at seven thirty-three. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the budget? We will have three minutes. Sir?
Rita, moderator. Dear Dune City Council and citizens... Uh, Alex Moore. Dear Dune City Council and citizens, one thing newcomers to the area may not understand about Dune City, the governing entity, not the area, is that has a long history of rude behavior towards its citizens and lacking those core services that many cities provide. Every service I can find provided by Dune City are services already provided by Lake County and the state of Oregon, with Dune City simply acting as a middleman. Common services present in other cities such as sewage and city water systems are not provided, but still DC may apply additional charges to citizens' own solutions. People who have pointed out the ways in which Dune City have failed to provide sufficient care for its citizens have in the past been publicly and privately berated, yelled at, and had the police called on them. On top of this turbulent history that you on the current council have inherited, recent years have seen a complete breakdown of the city's financial balance. The city is, by my interpretation of recent financial audits, still at least twenty-six thousand dollars in debt. As Geneva Jackson has pointed out in a previous letter, the city charter states in Dune City Chapter ten miscellaneous provisions, section forty, except by consent of the voters, the city's voluntary floating indebtedness shall not exceed ten thousand dollars at any one time. Further on, it says, all city officials and employees who create or officially approve any indebtedness in excess of this limitation shall be jointly and severely liable for the excess. As I read this, you need the permission of your citizens to proceed and risk legal slash financial repercussions doing so in any other way. The explanation as to how this debt is to be rectified has not been explained in any transparent way to your citizens. Why should we continue giving you the benefit of the doubt when you have so recently squandered the money provided by the state, county, and us, your citizens? If the status quo worked, we wouldn't be in debt. Dune City needs to change its operating procedures and the way in which it communicates with its residents. Otherwise, what are we paying city charges for? A famous definition of insanity is to continue to do the same things over and over again and expect a different result. It feels as if we're taking the money we've all invested in the city and throwing it away and trying to fix things by methods that have already failed. Each of you face a difficult choice, and I request you seriously consider these matters before passing this budget for inaccuracies and insufficient context for your planned solutions. If you are in violation of your charter or state guidelines with this budget, you as the counselors will be held liable for it. The question to ask yourselves is this, am I so confident in the belief that the failing Dune City has to survive in its current state, that I am willing to take on financial and legal risk to myself in passing this? This budget? Does Dune City...
Thank you very much. I'm at your Chinese up.
I'm gonna speak for, got one more sentence.
No, you're...
I have two sentences left, I'm going to finish them, ma'am.
Your Chinese up.
I don't care. Does Dune City need to exist at all, or would the finances of citizens actually be more secure and cost of living lessened if we dealt with the state and county directly? This all needs to be discussed in detail with your citizens, not simply passed on to the state in the hopes of being able to fix it later. Because if later doesn't come, we are all in deep, even deeper mess than we were before. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Well, I sent you a letter, and it basically says...
It's already in the minute, yes.
This is Geneva Jackson. Um, and I sent you a letter, it's very short, and it says basically what you folks have been talking about early about, early about this. There seems to be some problems with the budget, you're not exactly sure what they are, but you're gonna send them anyway because you wanna get it in there on time. And I, in my letter, have encouraged you to hold an emergency meeting to review what the reconciliations, reconciliation process was that allowed someone to come to these numbers. And make sure you have something good to present to the state. And, and when I was listening to you talk about trying to figure out what it might be and then trying to adjust them later, I might point out, and I looked at the budget for many, many, many years, and two seventeen, or twenty seventeen, or twenty eighteen, we were almost seventy thousand dollars in debt in purse, because they thought perhaps that maybe the money, they even got the money and moved it over here, or something, or we'd be out of... But you were in debt, and the state had to come in and tell you to put, pay purse. So I think we need to get a lot closer to right before this is sent in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing then, I close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine.
And then, point of order, the, the letter the gentleman wrote, does, can we get copies of that?
We have copies.
For his letter?
Uh huh.
Okay.
We have copies of both letters.
Probably extra.
That are already in. They're already in here.
Yeah.
They're already part of the mini meeting.
We did right now.
Okay, I will now entertain motions to amend the budget, if any. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the proposed budget and refer the same to the Dune City Council for final consideration.
Throw it out there, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget.
Is there a second? If no second, the motion fails.
Can you even read the motion request again, one more time, please?
It says, I will now entertain a motion to adopt the proposed budget. Well, I would change it to, I now entertain a motion for the proposed budget, refer same to the Dune City Council for final consideration. So would you expand on that, Lila?
I, I, I think that, that was in from the last meeting, so that was my fault, I should have just, that last part didn't need to be in there, cause you guys are the city council.
Okay. So is, will this come before the, the council again?
No, this will be the final consideration.
Yeah, this is the final, okay.
That's what I think you wanted to know.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, sorry.
So it goes back to the budget, right now?
Yes.
We send it back to the budget committee? Then, um, I don't know what the, um... Late fees or whatever, how will be fined or taxed by not turning in a budget?
I think they, they say they, they stop all, they can stop all funding, so they don't, they don't fine you, like, we get fines, they just don't get it.
No, well, all of our taxes, I know they will quit send.
Yeah.
So that means we'll have no budget money to spend.
How can we say that, I don't know if there's enough confidence in what's been proposed with the numbers and not having the possible adjusted general entries in there. I, I don't have confidence in it, I apologize.
Even though it's late, can we not apply for extensions?
Moving on that period, to my understanding.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to apply for them.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we, we refuse to, to adopt it, then we could lose all tax income? Or we can adopt it and modify it?
Correct.
Those are two options, right?
Cause they do send tax money out in July, and we will lose that. And they will not pay us back once we turn in a budget.
When will the proposed modification, when are those movements going to happen?
They will continue until it gets spent.
Time limit? Can we propose a time limit? I mean, we've been working on budget for I don't know how long, in and out with everything that seems to be off. It just seems like a continued and continued and continued issue.
Well, we have different people working on it now.
True.
And, um, with that, they've only been able to meet once or twice.
Once?
Once, and, um, it'll take them a couple more times, I think, in order to get things, uh, ready for us. So I would expect them to notify us when they're ready to propose something. But I know they're actively working on it.
I don't know if I missed something, but would, wouldn't that be a question for, uh, Lila and Joe as to whether or not they think they can figure out how to, to solve this, and how long they feel it would take in order for us to have a timeframe in order to approve this and move forward?
I just know they have to meet a few more times, because I watched Joe's head nod, and I said it would take a couple more times.
I got a minimum.
So, and I know they've been meeting once a week, so I don't, I think that's what Joe's schedule...
I'm obviously the speed bump, is what I do, but it's just a process. Speak freely, it's just a process, and we peel things back, we find more stuff, and then we gotta research that, so it's, it's a process.
Any estimate?
No, I mean...
I know it's difficult, that's why it's a lot...
Sixty days, probably forty, sixty days.
It's hard to ask, I just understand that.
Listen, I'm gonna wait for fourteen coming up next week, or week and a half.
And then I'll be gone for two weeks, myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll both be gone.
And we're kind of not at the same time, in sequence.
So in order to keep us operating, if we, we put a limitation of, we'll just say ninety days in order to reconcile and correct the budget, would, you, you think that might be within reason?
Well, once they get done with it, ask for the budget committee, and then it has to be, uh, go out. If they, once they approve, then it goes out to be published. How long does it take for it to be published?
Uh, for weeks.
Fourteen days, isn't it?
It doesn't get published once or twice?
Twice, unless we put on website and other places, yeah.
Okay.
So you're, what days are you going out with?
I will be on, um... June tenth through the twenty-first.
Okay, Joe, what days are you on?
Twenty-third to the third, twenty-third of May to the third.
So basically, for the next month, it's not feasible, okay, that's kind of acceptable.
They have between the fourth and the ninth to get together one more time.
So would it be feasible to have something completed, say, July first? July and August first?
I...
Yeah, we're gonna put a, a target to run for. Yeah, it's just been difficult with change of people.
Correct.
Different practices were just different. So it's uncovering and trying to make all the dots connect, cause we get a number, and we think, aha, and then we can't find that number, how to balance it out. So that's, I mean, it's a lot of forensic kind of accounting stuff, it just takes time.
Yep.
That's, that's been, uh, an issue with a lot of numbers that we've had before, that we can't figure out where to begin. So, um, and I'm very familiar with forensic accounting. It's what my husband did for a living too, so if you need help.
Yeah, that'd be good. More brains than that one's better, it's...
So, um... I, I think the, with them meeting two more times, they might give us one in July. Of course, the committee has to approve. And I don't know if that'll take one meeting or two meetings, but we can do them back to back, depending on what, um, changes we need and how long those take. And then we can, we have to go through the publishing. And won't it take like six weeks to do all the publishing that has to be done? Is that... If it's two weeks, then...
Well, then, for, then, well, it depends, cause you gotta do it for each meeting, so...
Right, and then...
So yeah, basically, a month and a half to do. Well, I'd make a motion to approve what budget we have now to build on to get the tax dollars, but with the expectation that by, you know, July first, that we have a better idea being proposed as to what our numbers really look like, if that is possible.
Is that possible, Joe? Lila? An example?
Well, like, I'm, I'm concerned now, I'm looking at the League of Oregon City, or what it's, League of Oregon, whatever it is. And they're saying that, once you adopt a budget, it's not easily changed.
Oh, it is easily changed, we just, we made them in the past.
Okay, but they're saying there's extreme ramifications in doing that, and there's a lot of, um, disclosure that you have to provide to the citizens in changing anything, and you can't spend more, and they go, oh, we need more, cause we spend more. So I mean, it's, it's, I, what I'm reading right here from the League of Oregon Cities is... So I mean, it's, I, what I'm reading right here from the League of Oregon Cities, it's not as easy to change. And I mean, I don't know, I'm assuming, I don't know, this way, I know Jamie's top good about these guys, and I've called him once. But this is the section I'm here on, once a budget's adopted, the process. And when one of these letters kind of hit the nail on the head of our responsibility and potential risk by not doing it correctly.
And we have potential risk by not doing it at all, but we have amended it before, and yes, and you write down why you amend it, and...
Right. As long as everyone's clear, you can't go over and go, oopsie daisy, we need more. They say right here, that's, that's a no-go, yeah.
We know that.
Okay.
So the proposal basically comes down to, we're gonna have some funding or no funding, is what I understand. We have no funding where we cannot operate at all.
Can we potentially redo funding, we can be legally responsible?
Sure.
According to these guys, I don't know. It's gonna be real hard to correct a budget when we can't pay us that.
Can you read off that paragraph on the Elkhorn?
Oh, shoot, I gotta find it again.
Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Because I'm here on Elkhorn, trying to...
Let's see, it's gonna take me a second, I'm gonna continue talking.
No, we're all gonna be quiet soon.
Yeah, I know, it's, like, pressure, I can't type. So I did a search, so... Good, it's gonna take me a second, because I forget how I even did the search. So... So just so everyone knows context, this document that the League of Oregon Cities puts out is how to do it, and kind of like the, what they call a book of dummy for dummies, whatever, and so it's really good. It says, "So on July first, cities began operating with the appropriation authority that was adopted by the Council for the budget. While it's possible for changes to be made to an adopted budget, once the fiscal year begins, this can only happen under specific circumstances. Two such examples are council-approved resolution transfers of funds and supplemental budgets that make changes to adopted expenditure appropriations and estimated resources. These are the actions that must be taken before, before more money is spent beyond what's appropriated in an adopted budget. Any changes made to the adopted budget require that the budget remain in balance." So it's unlawful to spend public money in excess of the amounts budgeted. Public officials can be sued for such actions if the expenditure is found to be malfeasance, is that malfeasance, whatever, in the office or willing or neglect of duty. Creating a supplemental budget or resolution transfer after expenditure is made does not protect governing body members from lawsuits."
Right, you just can't spend the money before you...
Right.
And so, we've done supplemental budgets previously, because things, we've changed how we're doing things, or we're gonna have to change it anyway, because we don't have the short-term rentals in there, we really don't have a number for that, so, I think it's gonna have to be, there's gonna be a supplemental anyway that we have to do. As I see it, because there's a lot of ordinances that we have to, have not completed yet that are gonna change the budget.
Yeah.
I may remove my motion, I'm not willing to take on that possible ramification personally to it. The way our world is right now, and people are unpredictable. What'd you say? Wait for you. I think to ask any one of us council members is...
I'm gonna ask any of them.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying, but if we're seriously here meeting and talking ethics as we, as we walk and run this place with guidance, ethically, yes. Are any willing of us to take up that debt? I just don't see it, but we're stuck between a rump and a hard place, I just don't want to, I can't, ethically.
Well, I think at this point, what we, and this is just my interpretation of what I'm hearing here, is we need to apply for the extensions, whether they give them to us or not, and continue to work on correcting this, and just move forward, that's all we can do. And, you know, the state is gonna say, you know, they either understand and they'll continue to move us forward, or they'll cut us off and we'll be done.
Yep.
There's two options.
That's it.
Which, at this point, the conversations that I've had with, with the county individuals, they have absolutely no idea how that would be accomplished, so I don't see it going that route. Not to say that it won't, but...
Well, we have no money.
We just, we need to correct it now, rather than keep kicking the can down the road.
I think it does need to be corrected.
So...
But we're gonna lose money, and I just want that out there, that's why I was saying it.
Well, it is what it is.
So, absolutely.
And even with our change, and you know, our people that have graciously stepped up to fix the many, I can say safely, many years of accounting errors that we are seeing now to this day, I think we owe it to our citizens to...
No, it's not, it's not just the budget, so...
Yeah, but we're, from here forward, we're moving forward and making those changes, and that's what we owe to them. And to propose and adopt a budget, even with proposed amendments, is not an ethical thing to do. So could we ask our citizens, do they understand the ramifications of not proposing, or not accepting a budget with, you know, the possibility of doing amendments, that this is where we could potentially be with no funding period, just to make sure that they are all fully aware of it?
Well, this is only a small section.
No, I know, but, but we're putting it on camera, reporting...
That's why I keep repeating it, so they know, that's the, what we're gonna do, is we don't adopt this budget, we're saying we don't want the tax money they're gonna hand out in July, and...
It's not that we don't want it.
Right, we won't be entitled to it.
We won't be entitled to it.
But we all want it.
But, well, I understand that, but...
It's just gonna be legally correct.
I understand that, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody knows all the options that are out there, and it means no tax dollars and no tax dollars, basically, we can't operate. We'll be, you know, we'll run out of money. We'll get less money this year.
Well, what I'm gonna do is tomorrow, I'm just gonna start, I talked to the Finance Department often anyway, because I don't know government, and they're really good, they give you the real answer, they're gonna ask where you're from, so I don't tell them, just in case. But, there's, you know, a lot of stuff around this, you know, so we just need to make calls and understand, because earlier today it said you could be, which means there's potentially that you're not, right, when you say you could be, it's those words that come afterwards. So, there, it's not definite we're gonna lose all funding July first, even on their time schedules right here, which is the handbook to budgeting for Oregon State, it doesn't say definitely if it's done, you lose all funding immediately, so I wanna call tomorrow and kind of educate myself and from the people that would make the decision. I know it doesn't help us today.
From the classes I've been to, they, they say if you don't turn in your budget, you lose your funding.
Well, people say that to get action, I'd get that, but...
But the world's also changed, too, so if they see that we're attempting to make a forward propulsion of fixing it, you know, nothing gets fixed overnight, nothing gets fixed, unfortunately, in our history fairly quickly.
No, I understand that, I'm just, wanna say that's what I...
Right, we have exposure that we may not get funding, right.
It's, it's there, but I think that due justice is what we have to do.
Sorry, I still need a motion.
So, if we make a motion to approve and it gets denied, that still provides an answer, right, or do you need a motion to reject?
I need a motion to reject it.
I'll do it, I make a motion to reject the buzz as it sits today, as presented to us today.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. The budget is not approved, we will not be turning in the budget for Dune City until what time we get this fixed, and it might not be for several months.
And then, so say tomorrow I get all this great information, we could do a special session to bring this up immediately, because I think we need to, you can't just say, okay, we're done, I'm not, I'm not senior seeing that, I'm saying we can't throw up our hands and go, it's time, if we get answers tomorrow, can we, what are the rules in acting? Because that's the whole intent here, isn't to kill it, kill the city.
Oh, we're not...
So, like, could we do a special session then, once we get more information that's very clear? Is that how that works?
Call me when you find out some information, and we'll see what we can do from there.
Yeah.
Just remember, public notice.
Right, because public notices have to be done, and then you'll be on vacation by the time the public notice happens and...
Yeah, but the information tomorrow could be, no, I see what you guys have, or understand what you guys have, approve it, it will help me to get validation, or they could say, blank, blank, I just need some firm answers.
All I'm saying is, we have to get notice to have another meeting, and you'll be gone by the time the notice gets in.
So we have to redo the notices, even though we, maybe we're not gonna change this at all, because it's a hearing, we have to redo the entire process?
We have to make another public notice that we'll have in the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Well, if it's not changing, we could get the notice and have the meeting before the deadline.
And there's no one saying you have to be present, I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna be accessible.
Would you be accessible by phone?
No, yeah, I'd have to drive about fifty miles, but I'll do that, I mean, it's important, right, I just don't wanna make a bad decision because of time or forcing something down. Yeah, I'm gonna be gone, but I'm gonna have Wi-Fi, I'm still running my company remotely, so I'm sure I can put in some time here.
Does our lovely system work yet, where he could come in by video?
We can still do voice, at the very least.
Okay. So, there's a solid answer to that.
Wyla says no, we're not doing that, can't do that.
That doesn't work, I drive at night, so...
There's always hope.
So...
And so...
Chris?
That's why I looked at Chris, does it work?
We'll put together a face plan, and he's my emergency palms up for you.
You're right.
Okay. So I'll make sure, I have to have connection anyway for multiple things.
So I guess the question is, is tomorrow, we'll be applying for extensions immediately then?
Oh, tomorrow, yeah, figuring out the landscape.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
It's gonna be in the afternoon, we'll do it, we just have that mission in the morning, so, yeah.
Since I have concern with that, too, just, just from the fact that I know that it's been, we've been late the last couple years, too, so I'm afraid that's gonna affect our ability.
Well, to hope someone knew and they didn't put it on record, so, I mean, serious, I mean, we'll talk to them, it is what it is.
Right.
We just gotta talk and plead and explain the truth and hope they're somewhat flexible with us, like, I'm just saying, if the state, or the county doesn't even really have a plan that's in our benefit of how to do something like this, so, you know, I know, I deal with a lot of state agencies, and they're really flexible now on some things, just because of our, where we're at and the world.
And just explain the changes that we've had to put into play to secure...
Sometimes they're open to it, sometimes they're not, we just have to find out, so we're just talking what-ifs right now.
Yep.
So...
Now, the direct ramifications are either the county or the state would take over, so who's gonna do what?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on from that, there's no executive session, further ado the order. Rich?
I have run across some information, and I found out that, and I don't know all the details on it, that our water rights can be transferred to municipal, which will greatly benefit us in being able to move forward with water systems or things of that nature. So they are not stuck in residential, as we've been led to believe, but they can be transferred, and this individual will help us move those forward in the right direction, so...
Would it take a certain amount, a certain percentage of those?
No, it's all of them.
It's either one or none?
No, it's all our, all of, all the city-owned water rights should be in a municipal standard. They were originally approved before Dune City was a city, when it was just a charter, which left them in a municipal stat, status, and they've never been changed, so they need to be looked at and changed, and we'll see where that goes, so...
Okay, Chris? Joe?
It's more of a statement, I think, for everyone, this probably a lot of scary stuff we've been talking about, like, no funding, what are you guys gonna do, lock the doors, but this is just the reality, this is the beginning of how you clean things up, it's gonna get worse before it gets better, so this hasn't scared me. You know, it's, we gotta, we have to do it anyway, you know what I mean, so we'll just head it off and work as much as we can and do the right thing, so I'm actually excited about this step in getting there, and we're starting down the process of truly cleaning things up, hopefully, and getting going straight and narrow, without saying...
Okay, you want some more?
Melissa? I'd just like to say thank you to the citizens for giving us this opportunity to fix these things, as, as you guys all know, we are a completely different council from where we were a year ago. We are making these changes that are very vital to the welfare of our town, so I would be gracious if you would allow us to continue with that progression, knowing that you are dealing with a whole different level of individuals. And stay positive out in the community, because no one person can fix this, there's no I in team, and it's gonna take every one of us, so we all have to remain positive in when it comes to budget and decisions that the council has to make, knowing and hope that we have your trust that we are doing it for the citizens of Dune City, not for any specific individual. So I ask for your guys', you know, continued reassurance that we are working.
Can I have my opportunity to vote?
Oh, my goodness.
I wanna reiterate, now we are looking for members to join the Budget Committee, so if you have ideas, please participate.
Absolutely.
I, 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 thank you, I...
We, we do need members, that's why I mentioned it earlier, is because we, they say it's mostly made up of council, that's because no citizens are volunteered to be on the committee, so, please apply, we would like you on the committee. Also, I'm very appreciative of the council, the reason we have a diverse council is so that we can have the discussions like this and have varied opinions, because I think this was what, the diversity of opinions makes a better council, and will make a better outcome, so I thank you all for that, and give you your opinions. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, the city council needs to know you've had, whatever time you wanna call it.
I'll second it.
I need the motion first.
I made the motion.
Adjourn at eight ten. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.